Motion to approve the agenda as written with the addendum motion. Second, this is first on paper.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November fourth, uh, October fourteenth. Motion, motion, Mr. Mitchell. And so this is narrow on paper.
Aye.
Going, motion carried. Right now, we have, we have no speakers on the comments, but we have three speakers for an agenda item. So we're all been up to the podium and they have three minutes. Matt, you. Just a minute, please.
Just where you'd like me?
Yes, please.
I'm here as a concerned parent, um, member of the community as well as spouse as to the current situation that we see in the fifth grade and classrooms. We were heartbroken to find out that my son's classroom teacher was resigning at the end of last week. And I want to know and want to feel certain that something is going to be done to help support those students and the teacher coming in. If I could go backwards and keep Mrs. Webb, I would, I don't know if that's a possibility at this point, but I do want to make sure that something is being done to support these students. There are incredibly difficult class, super big kids who are just kindergarten due to COVID. Now they're in a classroom where their teacher who has fifteen years of experience has chosen that the classroom situation is so poor, she has decided to step down. So what is going to be done to support a new teacher coming in without those resources, without that experience to make sure these students thrive? Every day, I entrust my, both of my sons as well as my wife to this district. And I want to make sure that this district has the best interest of those children and of our staff to support them, to help our students grow. And really mean, most definitely mean. So I ask to you, what is it that we're going to do to support these students, to support our teachers, to give this success for both our teachers and for both our students in this district?
Thank you. We don't, because comments.
Obviously, you don't have comments, yes, but.
Comments, we don't use the comments, but they are responded to on the next meeting. Or you may be contacted through the.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to read for whatever end because it's a very emotional subject for me. I'm Caitlin McKeith, I'm here as a concerned teacher. Um, I appreciate the time you're taking to listen. I just want to begin by recognizing how our work has brought in administration and into strengthening our schools, especially in these challenging times. However, I'd like to address concern that I and others in our community have observed. The increasing number of staff resignations, particularly among strongly dedicated educators. Many have expressed their decisions are not influenced by the workload alone, but by frustration stemming from working alongside colleagues whose performance does not meet professional expectations and by a perceived lack of accountability or support to address those issues. This is not about individual teachers, but rather about ensuring our system supports excellence and accountability for everyone. When high performing educators feel their efforts are undermined by uneven standards, it affects morale, collaboration, and ultimately student learning. It saddens, saddens me to see several of my former outstanding colleagues choose to end their career so quickly. A loss that greatly affects our districts. I urge the board and district leadership to consider ways to better identify support and when necessary intervene when our performance concerns exist. This might include a clear evaluation follow-up or consistent enforcement of expectations across all staff. Our best teachers deserve an environment where excellence is recognized and supported and our students are assured that they are learning from professionals fully equipped and motivated, healthy. I believe in this district and the incredible work being done here. By addressing these issues openly and constructively, we strengthen our schools, retain our best teachers, and ensure every child in our district benefits from the education.
And one more, Gina, I'm going to read a letter.
Yeah, you do. I'm also going to read a letter. So my name is Gina Rangelito, and I actually had a child with Mrs. Webb last year. So I'm going to read my letter. So I'm writing this letter as a concerned community member, taxpayer, and parent of children who attend through Central School District. I noticed in the board meeting minutes that there was a resignation of Mrs. Webb. My daughter had the opportunity last year to be with Mrs. Webb. From the moment I first met her, I knew she was an amazing educator who truly cared about her students. Throughout the school year, the information I received from my daughter was overwhelmingly positive even in difficult situations. While I do not know the specific reasons for the resignation, I do know unless, unless that, excuse me, unless there was a major concern, this is not a teacher that would resign in the middle of the school year because of the effect it would have upon the children and her students. My concern and what I have seen throughout the last six years that we have been in this district is that they have teachers who are not held accountable. Why would we as a district want to allow subpar educators to continue teaching our children and let well seasoned, supportive, and dedicated educators resign? I would hope that whatever the issue would have been, would have been discussed with Mrs. Webb and an alternative plan in place.
Thank you. Thank you, and as I said, we will comment, so we respond, we won't pay any response during the next couple of days, but we'll respond to all those at the next meeting. But thank you very much. And there were none online. Our excellent CO members.
Good evening. The High School Student Council asked me to speak about our board meetings. As you're aware, we decided to decorate the halls again this year and invite you to the fifth grade over here. The freshman class was decorated and personal, the sophomores have mostly seen, juniors have inside out, and the senior class have high. We want to take a moment to thank the primary and intermediate administrations for continuing to believe and support our values. We also want to thank the middle and high school administration for allowing us to voice our ideas and for working so closely with us to help them become a reality through Spirit Week, hanging over those in decorating halls. This is an event that ties our entire district together in one really valuable. Our first ever powder puff black football game between the crew juniors and seniors was a huge success. The football team did an excellent job coaching both sides, keeping the energy high and the competition close. And then exciting finish the seniors pulled off in the last second when they took their third. It was fun, spirited event that brought students and staff together and was well received by everyone who attended. We also are looking forward to next year.
First, to be in council sponsor, we're in the second year and we're also starting to have campus of our own. Our crowd report that we raised roughly $3,500 to go towards the scholarship for our seniors. We held the first battle of blues black football game in rural Alabama and law enforcement. Our crew on night took the championship once again, and we are hoping for a great game next year. It was a fun weekend that positively involved our students. Thank you, Mr. Shorm, for the education and administration for your continued support and sponsoring.
Thank you. Funny bit, lots of, I've been lots of process. Very good. So thank you so much, and it's so important for those teachers and our students, we appreciate that. Superintendent's report. Oh.
Thank you. Tonight, I want to review the results of our survey again. We did a schoolwide survey of our staff. So, um, one of the aspects of our staff culture and kind of survey that we, and when we address this was we want to spoke that our unions, the unions did say to us that it was really important to them that if we're going to require people to participate in the survey, that we are going to provide them with the time to actually do that survey. And so when I have a professional, the only day we did provide staff with that opportunity to do that, I think the administrative team for finding that time for our staff. As you can see here, we have two hundred and eighteen teachers, members of the Association of Teachers that participated in the survey. We'll break it up into different parts, list of the teachers as a matter of fact. So one of the things I like to focus on is the staff leadership and relationship. There are three different domains that we look at here. One, the staff leadership relationship, and also looked at district leadership and district climate. So, um, our highest domain is staff leadership and relationship. So you see that we have personal connection strengths that leaders excel in. Individual relationships with seventy-one percent feel like they're stood during personal challenges and seventy-one percent feel respected. I think that's an area that we can definitely build on. I think that's an area that's a strength of our leadership team, something that they do so well, and I think that that needs to be noted tonight. Another area of trust was an area of deficit, a record thirty-nine percent. Or trust between leadership leaders and faculty and the gap between personal and professional confidence. And that was an area that, you know, we're going to talk about areas where we need to work on. Supporting consistency as well, fifty-four percent find leaders supportive during work challenges, one thirty-four find for real leadership motivating. So I think, I think that leadership, I think it's important to recognize that in all of this work, we're going to be having strategies to support that. You can also see the district leadership, thirty-eight percent have decision making. Fifteen percent feel that teachers have, that teachers have adequate input and support decisions. So we see those one fifty percent who feel that way, that they are not being included in decision making. It's an area that we need to, to work on, and it's one of our lowest areas, and something we're going to be addressing. All right, operational weaknesses there, leaders struggle with communication. And one of the areas we talked about is the leadership team today. We're talking with the general units on that as well. Late then, we talked about communication, I think it's, it's, it's kind of a wide area because of the present board of education, we're going to look at communications. Goal clarity, forty-four say the leaders clearly identify goals, but execution and follow through appear problematic. District climate, low optimism, thirty percent are optimistic about school improvement. Twenty-eight percent describe colleague attitudes as positive, so that's a concern too. We're talking about that relationship, our colleague, the colleague relationship, I think is one of those things we need to address. Student engagement concerns, I think that teachers are definitely seeing student engagement, as far as twenty-six see students as enthusiastic about schools. A lot of their kids are enthusiastic about. Initiative resistance, thirty-two percent are colleagues who care new teaching initiatives. I think that that talks a little bit about where we are as a school, but it also talks about where we are with, with any of the initiatives that are happening. So I think that that's a crucial area. So what I'm going to talk about with our strengths, I think it's important that we always start to really talk about the things that we should offer. First of all, relationships, as I mentioned earlier, about seventy-one percent of our teachers understand, understanding the personal challenges of our staff. And seventy percent feel respected. Teacher-student relationship, sixty-one percent of, sixty-one important, respectful teacher-student relationships. I think that that's important, I think that's an area you can move on, but it's, but it's definitely an area. Professional trust before feel trusted to teach as they feel they face events. That's an area we recognize as well. Areas of opportunity are areas that we really need to improve on as well. District climate, thirty-eight percent. Significant challenges, over twenty-six of the staff seeing student enthusiasm, thirty, thirty percent feel optimistic about student improvement. That's an area that we definitely need to, we need to change and opportunity of growth. Staff leadership relationships, reporting trust between leaders and faculty, and that trust factor. Leaders and faculty, so I think that that's important. District leadership, we also talk about leadership effectiveness in the same. So if you look at this particular one of these, they're not bulleted in, are specific to some specific questions that were also noted in the survey. So fifty percent of field teachers have had a problem with that, spoke about that here earlier. I think that it really goes down to what is the shared decision, decision making model we're using in our district? And how are we, how are we making sure that our teachers are being heard and our faculty has a voice in the table? I think that if you ask me, I would go for you, that you do, we have really good relationships with the union, having been with them before. However, that's a way our teachers will feel, that's an important aspect that we need to be addressing. responsiveness, thirty-five, five hundred years response, response, feedback. That, that's an area that there's some question that we show weakness as well, and then communication as well. And we also, key insights, this is also our support staff. And this was shared in our district, and we will in future surveys, we can really grow to get more of our staff, provide more opportunities for our support staff. We definitely will be doing that with support staff. However, I will say that like the teachers, this is a much higher result than we had. So I think that's what we're going to do. I think it's going to be important to say here, there's a lot of many similarities between our support staff and our teachings. Staff leadership relationships, you can see there's, personal relationships are strong, but professional impact is weak. Staff view leaders as respectful, sixty-three percent, this is a lot higher here. Staff don't feel leaders care about them individually and working, and leaderships to motivating them. That's important. Pleasant interactions exist, but deeper professional connections and inspiration are missing. I think those are areas that as a leadership team, we definitely look at. District climate, key insight, trust. Trust exists, but optimism and energy are lacking. I think that those are, those are, we're talking about as well. Staff feel, feel trusted to do their work sixty-six percent of the time, maintain their respectful student relations fifty-seven percent of the time. Yet there's a low optimism about the schools or movement, nineteen percent. Overall, working environment, perhaps, certain perceptions. Basic respect and autonomy exists, it's a pack of collective energy in the future. District leadership, we'll talk about that. Key incentives, leaders, mercy is well intended, but sometimes ineffective. Staff believe the leaders have good intentions, which is where personal confidence in leaders. They have their best results, and areas of stronger. However, leaders struggle with communication, thirty-six percent responsive to feedback, twenty-five percent. And it puts, you know, staff decisions there, and that goes back to that piece of making sure we're being effective. So some of the strengths, staff, sixty-six feel legit, feel trusted to work the way they feel is best. Fifty-seven percent respect the relations between staff and students, and sixty-three percent find leaders respectful towards them. Fifty-seven percent view school leaders as friendly, two percent of teachers, understanding when personal challenges arise. Fifty-two percent are confident, leaders have the school's best interests at heart. Areas of opportunity, very similar, we see some of the very similar things. School provides optimism, that's a trail that's low. Student enthusiasm, twenty-two percent see students as enthusiastic, it's a little bit higher than some of the teachers, but it's definitely a concern for us. This is school district, working environment, thirty-one, overall working environment is positive. District leadership, twenty-five percent find leadership responsive to feedback. Leadership motivation, twenty-eight percent find work with leadership motivating. And communication effectiveness, I think that this goes back to we talked about communication, all this communication, making decision, making, decision making involvement. Twelve percent see a staff pattern that can make their decisions, and staff relationships. Leadership care, we quite feel that leaders care about that individually, so I think twenty-five percent. Overall recommendations, you know, looking at this, we are reading things like grading structure, opportunity for staff input in decision making through committees, surveys, and regular feedback sessions. One of the things that, you know, I think we heard that we have to try to open up is the fact that people feel that they, they are uncomfortable having conversations. Surveys aren't just about, our, this particular climate survey is not just about leadership, and it's not just about our one side. In order to fix any of these things, we need to have lines of communication and be able to address some of the areas. And I think that that's something that we're going to be working on. Improved communication systems, I think that part of it is, we have a community right now that works with our district communication to our, to our community. One of the areas that we probably need to further the unions up to is how to be able to address communication if they feel that their groups are feeling that we're not communicating with them. How do we? Develop a feedback loop, gather staff, and act, take action and communicate quality. Consistent, that's an area, we're talking about this idea of feedback, feedback, including our different groups. Focus on school culture initiatives, address low optimism, collaborative goal setting, and celebrating small wins. Student engagement strategies, I think that this is an area our teachers do well in, and we're, we're on is our student engagement strategies. Athlete, athletic media, we have a lot of professional development, I think this is, we recognize that. But we need to really start looking at ways that kids are feeling. If, if kids, if teachers are not, kids are not as engaged as we want them to be, we need to work on the ways to, to address that. And leadership development, providing training for leaders, our motivation of leadership, and staff engagement techniques. I think that's an area that we'll be looking at for our leadership team, and myself, for our district leadership as well. I think it's important to recognize that our, our district's strategic plan and our strategic goals, which will center on student experience, mental health involvement, and enhance communication. All aspects of this that are, that are definitely most important, what we're seeing in this survey. What I also want to say to everybody is when we're looking at these results now, I think that it's fully fair to say that definitely concerns about this. That we did, we did initiate this survey. There were concerns of autonomy and people maybe able to take the survey in private. Argue that we do need to provide that people with time and, and ask them to complete the survey. Because we never had results like this, we never had participation like this before. On the flip side, we've never had, I would say to us concerning results as we have today. Another piece of this that I think is really important to recognize that we love is going to be a bit of a problem for us. There has been a bit of mixed communication in regards to how to interpret or how to interpret each question in regards to what were you looking at as a, as an employee? So part of the campus was looking at, was directed to look at it from their building, the other part of the campus was looking at it from a district perspective. We did reach out to the company that we work with to see, is this an valid survey? And I assure us that it's not an invalid survey, it's an assumption based survey. And that when we look at the difference between scores in any particular sub-area, again, we can go much deeper into the results. Which can look at individual buildings, and that's not what we're doing as a leadership team and as a superintendent of the school. I, I take this very seriously, this is not something I'll say. I'm not proud, I'm not proud that anybody who works in this district feels the way they do about our district. That's concerning to me. But on the flip side, I will support administration any way that I possibly can. And I feel they have the best interest of our students there too. So I do think that we, we will, I will own that, we have areas to grow. But they, they were very sure with us that we did not mean to re-administer the survey. However, we're going to work as a team to come up with some strategies and areas to improve, things to get behind. I'm going to be working with the unions to talk about ways they can help support this, because it is something we have to work together on. And then on the other side of it, we also need to be addressing, you know, they, they feel that there is a perception survey. So even if we told you that you were only to look at it from a district lens, or we told you you were only to look at it from a building lens, that doesn't mean that's what everyone's going to do it from anyway. So we offer that we'll be doing the survey again in March, and I will say we'll do it, it'll be the same survey. And it will also be done in, in the same fashion. It will be done in a, in a time where we bring people together as it's the best we've ever had in regards to participation. Is there any questions for me on this? Yes?
First, David presenting this, Scott. Thank you, you know, my, my gratitude for the teacher and staff, I think how we felt this, I really appreciate it, I think it's important to use data for. The results certainly are concerning, I think that's a great word to use. I guess along that line, you know, we have an outside party running this survey. My experience with employee surveys is looking at a benchmark, either, you know, statewide, industrywide, nationwide, to make a benchmark here.
And can the board get access to the individual questions and their favorable responses? We have trending data, which we run the survey in the past. So we have not run the survey the same way in the past, so we will run it. In the past, we did not do a, a culture, a climate part of this, which is talking about. We did culture and climate, we didn't do the, the leadership side of it. So I think that comparing past data is not going to be as supportive for us, but we can compare this data in the future as we is for.
Was there another thing we need for teacher or staff to provide a free text response? There is now a certain of, you know, coming forward, so I would encourage the district administration to find a way to get a knowledge from these folks. These are concerning, that's going to be out of the market. I think a safe way to come forward is a level of detail and depth that maybe we can't give from. And I guess just the last question we have is, Mr. Penningstaff, twenty, two hundred and eighteen teachers, forgive me, I have the numbers, what is that for national personnel?
I'll tell my head and down town, hopefully, that are very high, that are, that are teachers very close to us, very, but, just not everyone, but they were going to be in the nine, at eighty-nine to ninety percent. And support staff, which is, we have three hundred people there, so that's the, the first. But again, I think it's important to recognize that we've done other surveys, we've asked, and we've asked people who are disfigured. Our numbers, especially from teaching staff, have never looked this high. And for even our support staff have never been this high. I don't disagree with you, that I think that we need to do other things to get people that are disfigured in it, because we look at, it's, it's hard to compare. I, 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 people, even, even compare goals or comments from fifty-nine people goes to two hundred, two hundred and some teachers. So I think that's important.
And I think you met with the administration team, you met with the teachers and staff as well.
I did, so this, these results have been, this, this exact body has been shared with, given option for staff to listen to first and following tonight's board. And following tonight's Board of Education, we did have to share this information with the.
Thank you. It is concerning data. It's a big issue, baseline. And doing that for staff, participating at such a high percentage. So hopefully, when we see this again in March or April, that there's a pros and it certainly shows us areas of pros. Thank you for all the participation. I did. Hold on. Thank you. Okay. P A T?
So first of all, I just want to follow up with Bethany is a valued member of our community building. For instance, we have a presentation for her own. As a member of P A T, we wish her well. She's a student. We do wish her well. She chooses to decide to do COVID. Wish her that she will be missed. On the same token, I wasn't able to make the afternoon presentation on this. And I had over 15 students in my classroom trying to make test practice before the end of the quarter on Friday. So I wasn't able to go through this. But seeing this for the first time, it's sobering. Some of these concerns, we've heard some from some control issues here and there. But to see this, when you look at 218 members of our teachers that responded, that's almost 100% of our P A T membership. I guess if you look at people that didn't respond to that survey that happened, there probably be people who were asked that, that remember what that was. There probably were a few, I guess it's worse than we even did. I guess my takeaway from this is I don't, I don't want people to walk away thinking that our administrators aren't doing the job because they are. What I take away from this from a P A T point of view is that if we wanted to make Peru a better district, if we wanted to improve on the relationships, it falls on everyone. We've got to work as a team. P A team with the administrators, P A team with the district leadership, P A team with C S E A. You know, I'm just talking about the point of view from P A T. It's going to take a team to turn these numbers around. We can't rely on, or place off the blame on the administrators. So we need to work with our members, see what they're feeling, take that, take specifics back to our administrators and our leadership. We need to work and again, I find it sobering because I thought we had good, good open communication. We sit in our meetings with Mr. Storms, Mrs. Andrew Day with the administrators, and we have candid conversations. And to most, I spent a long time since I remember walking out of a meeting where I felt like whatever was said was going to be held personally against them. Whatever is stated in those meetings usually stays in those meetings and goes as professionalism in order to improve those. So I know I'm going to be working harder to work with our memberships, work with administrators so that we can, because we do believe in the strengths of our central school district. We believe in the strengths of our teachers, our members, our administrators. And we know that this can be one of the better schools, if not the best school in the area. So I am here to fudge from a P A T standpoint, we will be working to turn these numbers around and help to do whatever we can to improve morale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Yeah? Shannon, I'm sure you're. I see you. Thank you. Megan, thank you, Mr. Green. I think that was something that didn't about, I think that we have a strength that maybe wasn't highlighted enough because we do have strong relationships with teachers, felt we had strong relationships with our administrators. And I think with that, it's a strong relationship. So we can go. I'm going to be, I think it's S E L survey results. If there's true results, that's what you should find. These are mindsets, how to do skills that are measured, that determine student success in a school and. So starting with five. Some of the grades were raised three to five. Ninety-four percent of students responded favorably. I think I see that with teachers. So we are, I imagine are, students are strongly supported by the teachers. Some of the children are supporting high. Students have, last year, we just spent a lot of time. We're conscious of positive feelings, the students are in place, we're happy to speak to them. Social awareness with others, others care about feelings, and we respect them. And again, perception-based, so students understanding what the question is asking and to tell everybody is, I'm not sure, but I'm sure. Areas of opportunity, self-efficacy. Students, 32% of students feel confident, they think about our school. 39% are unsure about retaining, wondering if to carry that running from here to next year. I think that's, I think that's what we're doing here. That's what I'm remembering for you. Emotional relaxation. They were worried about the statistics, they were worried themselves to have that system. So I don't love the link down there, but how do you turn around your students to have these courses? And challenging students to still, to work with that system. But again, it's important not to think that these things are bad things, right? When you finish, those are all, we feel them all the way in the range of how to do these things. And, you know, carry on, be able to control everything that happens. So recommendations for this, building on active confidence, to scout the challenges and celebrating progress. How we have directed this instruction with academics, making sure that we're doing that socialization. And regulation. Lifting those strong relationships that we have with our students. Providing targeted and educational interventions. Using our social process to teach some of these skills, modeling these skills. That's what I'm sure we're talking about. Those questions are asking students to be able to, how they get, and considering that direction of instruction of students, challenging for that life. Our six through 12 responses. Again, supporting relationships. You can see that there are various self-management. Students, students strong classroom leaders. 30% of the year, we are missing a correction. Lots of feelings, they frequent the experiences, like, after, they're, so, celebration, social work. They're caring about. It's a great opportunity for us to find a school that will, that 22% of them, they can use that for just 18 years. Even here, they're so excited, I think, yeah, you can get, you know, two kids are processing products, self-meditation, 7%. And we're going next year, 35% capable to, for the annual social recognition. So that was, that was similar to the, so I would say the biggest recommendation is this one, this mindset, however we have, we might have, yet, makes the, you have to act for, building back this confidence. Again, scouting, it makes you see that progress, teaching, relationships, strategies, that's that's, leveraging those strong relationships and helps. So I know, it's, it's. Those are the big highlights. Questions, students, you also, if you have any problems, you'd like to take this assessment with students, if you have any feedback on your, for the years. I forget that class record. And something like how this, if you look at this compared to the survey results that we've been touching, it was interesting for me to see that students were fully being excited. And then some other things, like we know that, I'm also back to our students, that leadership, like every day, folks are in the arena. It's about, everyone wants to be, you know, with those, with those solid relationships. We might not see that students go, that's one of the four things that we can't even imagine. It's day in, day out, during crisis and trauma. I think that all of the survey results reflect, reflect sort of, should take a look at this survey. Lonely, or maybe.
Shannon, could you just, um, let us know the, how many students participated in each one?
So K, six through 12, 626 students. And three through five, 323. So I think the, I think from my recollection, intermediate was about 80 something percent of students responded to me. And 60 something percent, 70 something percent.
Okay. Okay. What's communications? Whether any questions or comments on the, on six? Then a motion to accept A through, on six, A through K. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Okay. And on seven, we added that, you've got copy, but that's a, I'm sure it's, okay. In on seven, documentation that was given to us from the Treasury Tax Collection Report. Any questions on seven?
Our meeting being early.
No, true.
We were last meditating all of those.
Support. Seven, any questions, comments on seven? And a motion to seven, A through K. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? This is, on the favor, I, anyone votes? Motion, Carrie. Eight. Motion, Thomas? Eight. And a motion to eight, A through K. Motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Second. I'm here, so. Mrs. Graves, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, on the favor? And nine? Last month, we had talked about our, our board, some policies to talk about, and our board objectives. Tonight, we have a workshop on our board objectives. We will put those on the website. The board does a self-evaluation every year. And that self-evaluation really rolls into strategic points. So tonight, we went through what we made sure that we had some various objectives, goals, about goal setting. So we have goal setting, goal monitoring, roles and responsibilities, community, and what the legislative having to see. That we have those five areas on our, our board objectives. And hopefully, we folded those into a strategic plan. Every, as I said, every year, we go through, we do an evaluation, and they are based, we didn't finish, it's based just like, I think, our score. It's ineffective. Not the high, H, the highly effective, effective, developing, or ineffective. And even though we chose those five, they were the five lowest of our objectives of our scoring, they are all still in the effective range. It's just, they have to be in a role of that range. So we do have those, and we're going to adopt those tonight, and we will be out there. People will know, plenty more on the podcast next week. Any questions? Is anybody interested in going to that Rural Schools Association Winter Conference in Syracuse? Okay. Policies, any questions on our policies? This is our second reading on some. Okay. Then I have a motion to accept A through D. I'm not, motion, Mrs. Mitchell? Okay. So I was about to, all in favor? All in favor? Motion, Carrie. New business, we have first reading, 24,000 in our policies. Any questions? Okay. Then a motion to accept, first reading, 24,000. Motion's through. Second, I put a submission, all in favor? I, motion, Carrie.
Also, just, this is, this is, we're not a lot of, we're really getting there.
We're catching up.
We're almost there, so that's exciting. We'll have to call, update this.
There are 10 areas and many hundreds of pages. We're getting there though. We are getting there. And no one signed up or gave a comment for anything not on the agenda. So I have a motion to convene into executive session to further discuss personal issue. Motion, Mr. Webber here. Motion's approved. Okay. Thank you very much.
I really don't, I think it's, yeah. I just, I have.